You win.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Teresa, please call the roll.
Mayor Jones.
Here.
Gill.
Here.
Bowen.
Here.
Wassler.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
Jazz.
Yes.
And Brenneman is absent with notice.
All right, do we have any additions or approval of the agenda for this evening? Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none will vote Wassler. Yes. Mattson.
Yes.
Gill.
Yes.
Jazz.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
All right, how about approval of the minutes from the 2:20, 24 meeting?
Make motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, we'll vote Bowen.
Yes.
Jazz.
Yes.
Gill.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Wassler. No bills?
No bills.
All right, public comment, anybody that's here for anything else that's not on the agenda? I don't think that applies. I think they, I know what they're all here for. All right, we'll move down to application agreements, hearing resolutions and ordinance. First up, special event permit for Miles Fern Murphy. This is Bowles and a couple of our great high school students are here. Jump on up to the podium and...
We have the two ladies, representatives of National Society.
You bet. Say your name so everybody knows who you are.
Okay, I'm Alexa Borns.
I'm Zeljani.
Good to have you. It's in your packet, everyone, their application. Give us a little brief overview of what you're doing.
We're doing the Miles Murphy 4K, 5K, and it's like a walk slash ride for Kier Murphy.
How many years has this been going on?
This week nine.
This week nine.
Okay.
This will probably also, I'm sorry to let you in here, but this will probably be our last one too. Lauren, his daughter's a senior, so we're doing this one as kind of the final commemorative one. It's kind of ran its course per se, so...
Yep.
Yeah, we'll include that. We're hoping to have like a commemorative T-shirt and things like that as well. So we're gonna make this a little extra special.
Yep. Awesome. Awesome.
Just out of curiosity, is there a, I might actually sign up for this this year. Is there, how, what does the registration look like? What's the process?
It's, it's, you just show up. It's a free will offering. Um, we're hoping to get some T-shirts this year from the National Guard, commemorative T-shirts. But no, it's just a free will offering. The money goes towards Kier's scholarship fund for West Central seniors going into counseling or teaching, but it's pretty laid back. It starts at nine, yeah, show up sometime around eight thirty or so, just get signed in. We call it 5K, but it's really, you pick your distance.
Awesome.
Yeah, you all, starts in the park, ends in the park. It can be whatever distance you want it to be.
Be real small walk for you.
You could do a 10K if you wanted to do it twice.
Sure, real small walk.
Real.
Real small.
All right, I see you have the map in here. Any questions, Gonsal? If not, then enter day of motion.
Make motion to approve the special event as specified in the application. Second.
Any more discussion? If not, we'll vote Wassler.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Gill.
Yes.
Jazz.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
See you at the swimming pool?
Yes.
We talked swimming pool before, just like, so... All right, next up, resolution 2024-4, Bridge Reinspection Program. Uh, in your packet is the notes. Every four years, we have to inspect the bridges. We do get a portion of this paid by a state grant, I believe. Motion to approve resolution 2024-4 as presented. Any discussion? And we have four bridges, is that right?
We have four that they consider bridges. Western, they're, they're, they're culverts, not real bridges, but it's Western, Main, Fighter, and then Nicholson Road.
I'm sure the state picked Bros Engineering that...
They have a list of about ten. Bros is the one who's been doing Hartford for the last several years. So like I said, they're very familiar with our structures. It usually doesn't take them very long, so less billion hours.
All right, if there's nothing else, we'll vote. Bowen.
Yes.
Jazz.
Yes.
Gill.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Wassler.
Yes.
All right, next up, we'll move on to reports. First up, Deputy Cardis.
Hello, everyone. Uh, so February 2024 is a pretty good month. Out of 200 days, we had 220 calls for service, which averaged about seven point or seven and a half calls per day. Nothing too noteworthy to really talk about in calls for service, uh, nothing too alarming. We had 15 case reports done, and of those case reports, we had 10 harassed. Uh, but things were good in the city of Hartford, so nothing real concerning. So, yeah, I'll take any questions if there are any.
I'm kind of upset my plea scanner doesn't work anymore.
Yeah.
I need to talk to you about that. So I can't, I don't know what's going on anymore.
You are an old soul, Sean. My dad used to do that all the time.
I've been doing it for 20 years, but the state just completely went blackout, pretty much, so you can't listen anymore.
I don't know why. It's above me.
T Storm Chasers.
Yeah, T Storm Chasers is like out of business.
All right, any questions for the deputy before he sets? All right, thank you. I'll, I have one quick question. Sure. Um, around the school where the construction, I'll be doing there, is it kind of a...
I, so, uh, I don't know if you guys, I think Mr. May, you've already talked about this. So the new front office is on First Street now.
Yep.
And so a lot of the construct, or a lot of the congestion has, I would say, gone away. A lot of the teachers are parking in the parking lot, parking spot, parking lot, and also on First.
Okay.
So it's not as bad. Is it congested? Yes, but not as bad.
Bad, okay.
It's good.
Okay. All right, good to know.
For what it is, it's good.
Yeah, yep.
Good to know.
All right, thank you, deputy. Next up, Economic Development Director report from Amy Farr.
My information's in the packet. The only update I have is for the future economic development learning opportunities. Um, besides myself and Mayor Jones attending, Blair Beck Keynow from HADF will also be attending. Um, so that is my only update to that as of now. And then I do not have anything for executive tonight unless somebody has questions that they would like to go into that for economic development.
All right, any questions for you?
Looks like you guys got two new board members from the last few months.
You're at nine, you're at nine. All right. Yeah, full. Is that your full contingent, some, right?
Yep.
And next, next week, we're going to Black Tiger, right?
Mm-hmm, after the meeting. We're gonna go a quick tour. So if anyone would like to go, please RSVP to me.
All right, thank you, Amy. Uh, chamber, did we have it? Did I see a report in the chamber?
There is a report.
Okay.
Should be.
She'll be here next meeting, correct?
Yes. Second meetings of the month.
And did you get the contact from the ladies at the, from Stephanie at the library about the ribbon cutting on seven? Just wanted to make sure that I would... All right, next up, favorite part of the night, City Engineer.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my report is in your packet. Uh, since last meeting, not too much is going on, just continuing to review the design standards. Um, currently compiling some of our proposed revisions and we'll review those with city staff at our scheduled meeting next week. And then looking at, uh, looking like it'll be the end of March versus early April, um, for your review and acceptance into the city design standards. Uh, moving on to project updates, uh, Bikin Recreation Trail, revised letters have been sent to those residents, uh, as well as FEMA as part of the plumber process, so with those statements we received word that we're approved and good to go, uh, we'll be able to put those plans on the shelf for future construction. High 3A water main extension, just wanted to, uh, bring up that has been submitted for PA in our review, so we can get that bid. Um, once we receive their comments, or, you know, hopefully no comments on those plans, um, so we can get that project rolling. On Western Avenue interchange approach, I mentioned last time, we've submitted to the state, uh, as part of their review. Their bridge office is running a little behind, um, so those plans are not getting submitted for federal highway review until June. But we did receive some preliminary comments from the state, which we are currently making up to, making updates to, and I will, um, have those complete prior to that federal highway submitted. Back up to the Water Resource Recovery Facility, more, truthfully, more of the same since last meeting, they continue to work on walls. Um, they do have all of the exterior walls at the site completed, so once they're cured and ready, they will begin to backfill that and then work on the interior walls. Still targeting, um, April or May for foundations at the Ops Building, um, and then continuing on the trunk sewer once weather hopefully breaks through. You know, we get a little apprehensive with this nice weather situation. So we're holding off just to make sure we don't go into a lay spring disaster. Uh, if there are any questions, I do have an action item.
I do have one question. On the Western Avenue, I've had a couple people ask how that's gonna look. Do we have anything that we could show the public?
So, um, I've been talking with Justin. We are tentatively scheduling a meeting for all the owners along that it's gonna affect for the 21st of this month.
Okay, yes.
So...
Cause I've had, I've had a few people ask how the, what, not necessarily people up there, citizens just wondering how it's gonna look.
Nothing is finalized yet with it, but like I said, we're shooting for that date. We're gonna talk to the property owners along there first as a group, and then we'll probably, you know, one, then we'll have more questions, more information. We'll maybe individually talk with them, and, and so once we get further down the road, we'll have a map probably we can show, yeah, the blink and start addressing.
Okay.
We got a, just a quick question, Michael, just out of curiosity. How does the water go from like the digester tank to the stage one area? Are there pipes underground where the water goes from each tank?
So the beauty of the Aramada was one of Creve's real big selling points is it's all crafty between the tanks. So there are no, um, there are no pipes underground. It basically, um, big of a kind of like a dam. Like it'll overflow from one tank into the next and into the next. So that's a nice thing, and then machinery known for replacing parts, um, just quite a simple design, complex too. So that's, that's how it transfers between the tanks.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right, anything else for Michael before we go to the pay app? In our packet, we have the, this is pay app number five.
For $909,000.
Gets us to a total so far of $6,928, right?
Six thousand.
Six million. Oh wait, we're dropping a bunch of zeros.
Lot more.
Yes. I think I was ready for first time, six thousand. Six million, yeah, okay.
Six million, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars.
All right.
Yeah, we should have two.
Pay request number five, two Grayslake Construction Group for $909,800.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Bowen.
Yes.
Jazz.
Yes.
Gill.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Wassler.
Yes.
All right, Michael, anything else?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Good enough. Public works, Craig's is, Craig's is in the packet. Uh, he does want us to talk a little bit about this tractor deal. Is that coming up under new business or is it under old business?
It's under old business.
So we'll talk about that when we get down there.
Yep.
Get caught up here.
He is out this week, but he'll be back on Tuesday.
Yeah, there's a little field trip.
Put ISO on this report, ISO. We received a report this weekend. It looks like we are at four.
So that's something that the fire department has been working on. What it is, it's an insurance rating scale. Um, all communities go through it. They, this company basically rates, you know, your, how well you can respond to fires, what's your equipment like? You know, basically, how well you can, um, promote safety or keep everything safe and prevent loss within the city. They do this, I think every five years, they have one like looking at the fire department and everything they do. They also have one looking at the city, and we went through that just a year ago. The city, as far as our regulations for requirements for building permits, to make sure we're following all the codes. So everything staying as safe as it can possibly be. The better rating you get, the insurance rating for the city is lower and helps people out on their insurance, so...
Is a four good?
A four is good for a city our size and will rate where we've been previously. Unless you've got a full-time fire department, a staff on hand, it's really hard to get any better. Sioux Falls can get better because they have obviously man fire stations. We are just a volunteer, but for, for what we got, it, it is very good.
All right. We'll move on. Karen, you got anything to add to your report?
Um, I have one correction for, under the receipts for February, the grant drawn number three, 107,000 of that is actually sales tax revenue. Um, it all came in one lump sum, and I didn't know the breakdown when Teresa was gone, so... So sales tax looks a little low, but it's actually a little higher than that, so...
Okay.
Other than that, yeah, everything's in my report as presented.
Everybody that needed to get their stuff in did?
Yeah.
With the donation for the park bench, are there things attached to that? Put a plaque on it, I assume?
It already has one.
It's already done.
All donations that come through be placed on them.
Yep.
Yep, this is bench, I can never be hitting for, is, um, sitting, um, we have a little parking area by the nature trail, by the lagoons. That's where she wanted this bench, so... It's kind of out of the way, but it's for people that walk that trail. There's someplace now, so it's nice from nature from her.
All right, good. All right, thank you, Karen. Teresa, we'll move on to your report.
Mine, I already told you about the public meeting that we're working on. IT Service, I just want to space on that. Um, A and B IT Solutions is working with getting everything trans over, um, you know, from our old company to them. Um, it'll take, you know, a couple, three weeks, they said, but we get everything set up under them and get rolling with that. Once we do get everything, um, set up, I think I mentioned this before, I'm gonna talk to them about getting the equipment in here, the AV equipment in here to be able to get bigger monitors and be able to, you know, have a better system in here. So we'll, we'll see what they can provide and help us with on that. Um, on your ta, on the table, there is an invite. Um, the DOT is gonna hold the... HR Green's been doing this study of the Highway 38 corridor from Homewood all the way to Marion Road. They're gonna have a public meeting on the 13th date of, 13th of this month. Anybody's welcome to come, and look, they've got some preliminary drawings of various things. Nothing is finalized. I think they got about three different bridge designs for our, our next exit, you know, to the east. One of them's a diamond, which would take up a lot of our land for our waste treatment. I told them we are not in favor of that one. Um, another one is incorporate a roundabout because it'd take up less room, and then another one's kind of shifting the road. But right now, this is a public meeting to gather information for people to look at it and get comments. And like I said, this is just a study, and the law will be incorporated into the study, whether the DOT does anything or not.
Project.
That'll be their decision in the future, but... So if you wanna see, and there is, you can scan that QR code, and you can go onto their site and see what some of the draft exhibits are. So if you have any comments, look it over, please let me know so we can get, you know, hear input too from it, so... Um, and the only other thing, um, I don't know if you guys are aware, but FEMA is really nationwide going and revising a lot of the floodplains throughout the nation, all the states or whatnot. So again, yeah, exactly.
Job security.
Same thing. The, I think they're trying to incorporate more floodplains in here, just sort of walk. Um, I know like Lenley's never had a floodplain. The last go-around, they got a floodplain now. There's portions of the town that are in a floodplain. Um, they've sent me preliminary plan, uh, maps to look at. Uh, it looks like ours has pretty much stayed the same. I gotta review them a little bit further, but I don't see right now any real changes to ours. Um, I think that is because when we got our first floodplain, you know, we had our engineers go through and actually do, figure out the base flood elevations, do a studies, figure out exactly where the water's gonna go. So we have a lot of data for our areas, so they use that data. Not much has changed, and we haven't done any big changes to the creek or floodplain, so I think that's why ours has pretty much stayed the same. But I'm gonna review them just to, uh, you know, double check and see. I, I can't right offhand see anything right now. So, but anyway, they're going through that process right now. They are hoping to enact these, this new floodplain later this year. Um, so they, they are working on that, so I'll hear stuff out about, about that. Uh, FEMA may require us to update our floodplain ordinance because they like to put on a lot more regulations, so that's something we may have to do down the road. Um, I haven't seen any samples of that or requirements, but I'll keep you guys posted as they go through this whole process, so we'll see.
Last big time it cost me a lot when I lived on Fire.
What?
When I lived on Fire, you know, put that in the floodplain before reading, just reading the drainage.
Yeah. It is costly.
Higher than the whole town in the floodplain.
I know, it's... I hear it's kind of crazy, but, um, yeah, so I don't have any other updates, or does anybody have any questions?
Um, just, uh, so you have that Bill Mus sponsorship, I did run into Greg Wilson, uh, last night, and he confirmed that they approved that sponsorship, and it sounds like there's just some technicalities about if they would approve. Maybe not what was originally proposed, or if they have to, so there's a...
Yeah.
Yeah, and I haven't, I, I've sent several emails to him. He applied once.
Right.
Suggesting a date. We couldn't get together, so I sent about three to him. I emailed him, I did yesterday when I got back. Said, yeah, you got a date? We can kind of talk this through.
He typically rolls in for one of the chamber meetings. Is that toward the end of the month?
I think he comes to Hartford towards the end of the month.
So we have to make sure we try to catch him either that day or next day.
Let me know, so...
Yep.
So I haven't, you know, we haven't, so I haven't shown him the option to get input from him, so...
But Travis shared that they, I mean, their board is, basically, they've said, go, we just gotta get the details.
Yeah, so we just basically gotta figure out what they're happy as far as the details, what kind of signage.
Board members was there and she was tickled that this, you know, place that, I guess, being involved with some people, so...
Yeah.
Awesome.
Good.
Good.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Let's move on to old business. We've talked about, uh, first up is approval for the purchase of a tractor and mower as we budgeted. Craig put a, here's a note in here. I did talk to him. The reason that they switched, and I think he says it in his note, is because the one that he wants to buy is a heavier tractor and will handle the mower when they haven't reached out to mow. I asked him if he was comfortable with, with this combination, and he said yes. So what he's looking to buy is the, uh, New Holland Power Star 75 and the New Holland 107M for a total of $76,500, and we had budgeted $80,000 for this expenditure.
Motion to approve the purchase of the tractor mower as presented from Public Works Director.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Wassler.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Gill.
Yes.
Jazz.
Yes.
Bowen.
No.
All right, we still were four, we're good. All right. Now we're to new business. Doctor Newly Mented, Doctor Eric Knight, now we can introduce your doctor. I found that out at the deal. Is this relatively recent?
January 19th.
Okay.
No big deal.
Yeah.
It's gonna be done.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Uh, Eric's superintendent, Gary's here to discuss our, um, early learner program that we've discussed a little bit at one of our meetings. So I'll let Eric kick her away and give us the rundown, and then we'll have some discussion.
Perfect. Mayor Gonsal, thanks for having me. Again, Eric Knight, superintendent of the West Central School District. Uh, South Dakota Early Learning Communities, uh, first of all, or what is it? Basically, it's a partnership between three entities within a city. Um, and so in Rapid City, it is, um, their preschool, are they, yeah, their preschool program, um, private or public. It is their city, and it is their economic development, uh, and then their school came on, onboard as well. But you have to have three public entities that will take this on, and what it does is just look at what is happening from birth until school age, and where are their kids, what are they being involved in, uh, and why is it important? Uh, it's important to me because in my previous district, we had three and four-year-old preschool with a junior kindergarten, and so for 20 years, that's what I knew. I knew that every third grader in our district, granted it was a little smaller scale, but I knew every three-year-old that was gonna be our kindergarten. And so we would start some services if they, behavioral, speech, occupational therapy, physical therapy, and we would get them going. By the time kindergarten came around, they knew our staff, they knew the people, uh, and then four-year-old, and those services would continue. I come to West Central, and we don't have our own, uh, preschool, and so we get these five-year-olds who, maybe they were at home, maybe they were COVID toddlers, maybe they went to a preschool here, and we have some really good ones that I'm learning about. Uh, or maybe mom was working at home and they were taking care of themselves, uh, and we were getting them. And so 14 of our 28 junior kindergarten kids are on IEP, or a special that Individual Education Plan, primarily for behaviors. And a large portion of our kindergarteners were too, and so we didn't have any of that background, three-year-old knowledge, four-year-old knowledge, and so we're just reacting, not being able to plan. You know, we've already had our budget meetings kind of set where our enrollment's gonna be and started planning. Well, now the next new school year, so if we fast forward to September, starts without any knowledge of where these, uh, two-year-olds come from, we can't continue to just react. We have to plan a little bit before these kids. And so I'm also the chairperson for the South Dakota Preschool Levels of Excellence, and so I thought, well, what a perfect way. I'll go into these preschools, even though we don't have anything to do about it, we'll collaborate, partner. Well, the first part there to be a preschool levels of excellence is, do you have a certified teacher? And if you know about our preschools in South Dakota, it could be Ernie's Bar and Grill at night, preschool in the morning. There's no oversight, no licensure, we're good to go. Well, unfortunately, these folks that are dedicating their lives to our three and four-year-olds, they don't have, they can't pay for those folks, and so it kicks them out right away. So we went down that road, Amy and I had a meeting, um, with them, and that's what I was hoping for. And then we can invite them into our professional development, we can give them some ideas, give them some strategies. They can give us the heads up on some kids, and then we can start that process. Well, that went out the door. And so, uh, South Dakota Public Broadcasting, um, the Penny Preschool Project, uh, and Kevin Nelson started South Dakota Early Learning Communities, and what it does is it gets those three entities within a, um, city together. We go through a matrix of about 170 different items that, yes, our city does that, yes, our school does that, no, our preschools don't do that. And we just collaborate and find ways, uh, to better our youth in those three, four, and five-year-olds. I just have some really quick stats. So in South Dakota, again, we're one of six states that doesn't pay for preschool. The rest of the states all fund a public preschool within the schools. Uh, we had 600, or 61,167 in 2019, um, children under the age of five, and 74% of them, because there wasn't a preschool within their school. We had no idea really where they were, where they're coming from. And so again, our reactive nature that schools are having to, uh, go by. Students that aren't, don't have a preschool education, again, from, you know, what does that look like in our state? It looks hammered. But 25% of them are more likely to drop out of school, 60% of them never attend college, 74% of them, uh, likely to be arrested for violent crimes, um, and 40% of them more likely to become teen parents. And so this started in Rapid City, and Rapid City found that, they just traced it back, there was homelessness or these violent crimes. Where does it go to? Well, no college, um, attendance, no high school diploma, no preschool. Uh, and they found that it was costing their city for each one of those individuals that were homeless in kind of in this system that they studied, $215,000 in that person's lifetime, uh, that it was costing the city. And so they partnered here, um... So that's kind of the, the what and the how. At the school, when we get approached for programming, the first question I always have to ask, all right, that sounds great, and I think it would be great for kids, but how much does it cost? Yeah, yeah. How much does it cost? And so Kevin and I, Kevin Nelson from SGPV, he and I started the preschool levels of excellence together, uh, with another bunch of other folks. And so this is his last hurrah before he officially retires, so he's not gonna charge us anything. So there's no cost to the city, no cost to the school, no cost to our daycare or HADF. Um, it will cost so far, uh, Mayor Jones, sometime, so far costs.
That's pretty cheap, though.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
It's normally rated.
Whoa.
10 cents an hour.
You might rate.
Yeah, in 80's, um, time as well. The benefits, I think that from a school standpoint, again, we can plan and prep and not be as reactive. Uh, from a city standpoint, I think you can throw up a bill... From a city standpoint, I think you can throw up a billboard and say we're one of five early learning communities in South Dakota, move here. And then along with all the other benefits uh that we've seen throughout there. And the thing that I really like about it is that we have resources at a school that, from professional development to in-service days, things like that, that it wouldn't cost us anymore for twenty more people to be there in those preschools or daycares to join. And so that collaborative nature that that would um allow, I think is, is a natural fit. And again, it doesn't cost anything. And so I think you have a uh memorandum of understanding. Amy assigned it, the school board, uh at West Central approved it last month as well. And so if you would come alongside us and be our third kind of uh wheel in the, in the party, we would appreciate that. If you have any questions, I can try to answer.
And just to clarify, actually, Justin, Ike signed off on it as the president of HADF.
Yeah.
Did you see my face?
Yeah, I was.
No.
Like who I am. My question, love, love the idea. The responsibilities, those are all shared between those three groups within the, I was a little unclear reading through it, just the obligation of the, what the city was actually obligated to do as part of this.
Sure, so, so far, we met just to gain interest. We're gonna meet again next Tuesday and we're gonna, well, the principals and I have already gone through the full matrix and kind of put high level, we got this. Medium level, I think maybe the city's doing it, I think maybe the preschools and daycare are doing it. So then they're gonna decide, yeah, the city's got a policy on those, we do it. After that, it's then just finding those areas that we don't do very well, city, school, um HADF or daycares. And then coming together and say, hey, we can have a public event at the library and cross that off our list. We can, at the next in-service, have all of our daycare folks there, so.
I think that's probably where my question was, when, you know, not that I wouldn't be in favor of some expense related to this, but I wasn't clear how some things would happen and if ultimately there would be some.
Yeah, and so potentially it could be, I mean, if the city decides that they wanna, there's some area uh transportation that, you know, our kids uh from daycares aren't getting to the, to the library or to the pool and the city decided to take on it, but. So I'll frank off, nothing, it would.
So in practice, and so um this early learners program is working with the daycares in town to identify students, and I think I said, they said at risk, right? So students from different backgrounds that are at risk. And it's, it, and then is it kind of taking a um, yeah, focusing more on them to get them kind of up to pace? I guess kind of explain to me in practice, you know, what does that look like?
So through that collaborative nature, those daycare folks would tell us, hey, cause we have birthed the three and we have to provide those services? And so, but if the kid isn't identified, then, then we can't or we don't. And so they would tell us, or we would learn through in-services or love events at our library. Hey, tell me a little bit about Johnny, I think we, you know, our speech, if we worked with him right now, would be able to help him before he gets gets right into, to this. And so that's.
And so if it was speech, for example, then that person, that child would work with a speech therapist?
Yeah.
And obviously.
They've just come in, they go to daycare.
So who's paying for the speech therapist though? Like where's the money?
So once we qualify, our, the county pays for the birth of three.
Okay.
And then they would reimburse us for the time.
Okay.
But when we never know about them, it's hard to intervene and, and provide them those services.
Okay.
So currently, they're not identified, they start kindergarten and then the taxpayers at West Central pay for it. One hundred percent.
Yeah.
Yep. And usually in the rears, because you're not prepared to write behavior for it.
Yeah, because, so out of those fourteen of twenty engineering learners that we just qualified, the other one, the fourteenth one happened today. They started school in August. And because of testing, because of time lapses, the first service they got was last week.
Is there some mechanism besides through the daycares, that will there be community outreach or for those kids who maybe are at home? Or is it focused primarily on the daycare?
So we've talked about that and I think the daycare is because we don't have a connection, that's what we'll start. But if we can talk to the city and make a flyer to put in water bills or utility bills, things like that. And then I think that the connection with the city library, our librarians are already on board that, hey, we don't do anything right now for the city, but we could do a once a month in the night library reading time. And have a couple daycare folks there and they can help uh get that, just more connections.
I've mentioned this already, because I was talking to Stephanie Benzar from Sula about the ribbon cutting for our signboards in Donald Tonne Creek. And I said, hey, we're, we're meeting on this right now. And I said, I think because the, we're at advantage because we own their building. I mean, so I said, we wanna work on this. And I said, I think I'm gonna be able to get council approval to go forward with this. And I said, you guys are a key piece to this. During the summer, like when we have our farmer's market, get them to set up tables or when they do their block party, whatever it may be. And then we do a summer rec program. You know, I was kind of thinking, thinking this thing ahead, how can we as a city take things we're already doing just in handsome? And she was absolutely on board. And we have such an advantage with Leslie Wallace over there at the library, because former teacher. I mean, we really have an advantage. So anyway, that's my, I think, from the time Eric and I first talked about it, I, I said, man, I think this is a, this is a great deal. And I was, I assumed that the council would.
I moved to uh proceed with the uh MOU, um by gathering additional information, having our city attorney review the agreement.
I would second that.
I'm, I'm sorry, I just, MOU, yeah, remember, and I don't understand, I didn't know if I should spell that all the way out, but yes.
All right. Any more discussion or questions?
What was the motion, the attorney's subject?
Look at.
Okay, I just want to.
Yeah, we'll see with different, yeah, additional information, having our attorney review and then we'll proceed with signing off on the memorandum of understanding.
Okay.
For this program.
And with this not being completely like they do with the rest of them, because Kevin's doing it for free. If there is something in there, I'm sure that they'd be willing to.
Negotiate.
To work on it, yeah. It's hard to negotiate nothing, but yeah.
I know him quite well.
He's from Beers, isn't he, from Beersford?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. It took him forty-five minutes to do what we did in ten.
I know, I tell them that every time.
Also, you've heard this.
Forty-five minutes for it, he did it in ten.
Kevin, that.
If you're coming to Beersford, thanks to me, we'll leave you out of it.
For the, for the entire communities.
Uh so the Smith is done at Rapid City, Brookings is about three quarters of the way through it, Watertown, um.
Oh, you're not predicting it. And Beersford is thinking on it, right? They're, they're.
I think they're gonna do it.
Yeah, but those ones are, are through and done. Sioux Falls has been in and out about four times, they have too many moving.
Who's that?
Sioux Falls.
Yeah.
Has been in or out four times, just trying to decide who should do what.
And you guys, Amy Becker was there at the first meeting, so the daycare and the.
Melissa Atkins. Seven Stones?
Yeah, from Zire, yeah, so. So we've already, that.
So yeah, since that first meeting, we gained two more preschools, our daycares and the library, yeah.
All right. Anything else? We got a motion in a second. Hearing no other, we'll vote. Wassler.
Yes.
Matson.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Jazz. Bowen.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Beth. See you next week, yeah, go back and check it out. All right, next up on the agenda, we have a tax abatement for parcel six zero six five one. Prove a tax abatement request as presented for parcel six zero six five one. Any discussion? Oh, I noticed on something, on this documentation, there was an address. They had uh nine hundred Fairway Lane, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. Did you notice that?
And they have parcel numbers, which you can look up too, you just can't have the readymon.
Oh, but they had the address wrong. They had Sioux Falls instead of.
Oh, I see what you're saying there. I thought you were pointing on it. I'll note that to them when we get sent back to them.
Hey, I just want everybody to know that I read in the packet all the way to the end.
Perfect, I will let the county know that.
That's the only reason I'm bringing that up right there. All right, so we got a motion, second, any other discussion? If not, we'll vote. Bowen.
Yeah.
Jazz.
Yes.
Keel. Matson.
Yes.
Wassler. Anything for, you know, Amy doesn't have a report, anything, anything for a sec? If not, I entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.